Okay, is everybody ready?
It might just take a little bit.
Welcome everyone to the February 4th City Council Work Session. Before we get into the items, we're having a little discussion around the table. Council members were a little confused about a meeting on Thursday.
I believe that's a budget meeting.
We were just a little surprised to see it added, I think.
Kind of like this one.
Yeah, come on up and explain what that, the purpose of that is.
Hey there.
Hi, me and Caryaga at Central Services. The citizen members of the Budget Committee meeting will be meeting tonight to receive an update from the city manager on the financial action plan as it's been presented to you. And then the city attorney Glenn Klein will go over election laws with them because in the event that you place something on the May ballot, then we will change the typical schedule of the Budget Committee meetings.
But tonight, that's between 6:30 and 7:30, which you just talked about, right? But on Thursday night, it's a regular budget.
That's a full Budget Committee meeting on the capital improver program.
Is that all it is, CIP?
Yes.
Where's it being held?
Here. Yes.
The capital improvement program, this is every two years that we go through this and generally what we do is we present that to the Budget Committee who then eventually makes a recommendation to the council.
On Thursday night, they'll deliberate and make a recommendation to council and it will come to council in February.
Yes, Claire?
So I guess it was kind of presented to us as a Budget Committee, the full Budget Committee, citizen and council, is that the intention?
Yes.
Because for some of us, it's a challenge because it's an added meeting that we didn't have plotted in.
Maybe light on the council side of things.
Okay. My apologies. I was just saying, I think there's 12 meetings this month that I saw on the calendar. Well, I'm better with my cold, but still you'll hear I sound and cough a little bit, but I'm feeling a lot better. So first up this evening is the stormwater and park service fee ordinance, city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And what I thought I could do is actually, just to set the stage for really both items tonight, I'll go through about three or four slides. You've seen them before, but I think it's good just to remind people of what the situation is and what we've done to come to this point. And then I'll ask Glenn to review. What you had asked us to do last time is to bring back the ordinance that you see before you, and so I'll ask Glenn to work through that. But just to briefly recap again, again, you've seen these, but just for others as well. We entered into this discussion with a forecasted $6 million gap. And this is, as you remember from last year, we anticipated really a two-year budget process to close a gap. What was $7 million at that time, we closed four as part of the FY13 budget. We were anticipating three for FY14. As we talked about several weeks ago, while we've been driving down expenditures on the revenue side, property tax revenue just has not been coming in at the levels that we had projected, which was a conservative projection at the time. And as a result of all of that, the gap became, moved from $3 million to $6 million as we are going forward. And just a reminder, what we have done over the last four years has been quite a bit. We've reduced $24 million in our general fund expenses. Remember, we're talking about the general fund here, although there has been other work in other funds as well. But reduced by 24 million, and for comparison purposes, the general fund is between 120 and 125 million, so this is approximately 20% we've reduced. We have continued with the guidance from the council and the Budget Committee to try to maintain services as best we can and to continually balance the goals that council has set out for us around sustainable development and accessible and thriving cultural recreation activities and sustainable, or excuse me, public safety and some of those kinds of things. So we continue to balance those. We have maintained a prudent reserves throughout this time. And we've talked about the need for those to help mitigate or moderate as we've gone through this recession and the lingering effects of the recession. We have eliminated more than 100 positions, so that's been a portion of it as well. And we've continued to look for efficiencies and have. Some of those have been creating new partnerships as well as employees throughout the organization over the last four years have been very creative in finding new and different ways to achieve the missions that they've been given. But we also throughout this have not just focused inwardly, but we've invested outwardly in the community and continue to invest in community goals. Human services is a good example of that. Even as recently, in the last couple of months, the council has invested additional one-time monies into some very important services, particularly around homelessness. And we continue to invest in public safety. We've added new police officers downtown as part of a downtown public safety program. So we have continued to invest within the community. And we've tried to minimize impacts to community services while doing things differently. A good example of that is the continued merging of the police, or excuse me, the fire departments from Springfield and Eugene. And in that case, we're not only saving dollars, but we're actually achieving operational efficiencies and actually providing as good or better services some cases. And so I think that's a good example of our fire department employees at all levels being very creative in that. And throughout, we've said, we've been very mindful of people and individuals, families and businesses, and so we've worked very hard to keep fee increases minimal and without raising taxes. This is a graph that shows where we have been, particularly on the expenditure side. What this says is in those seven years prior to really the start of the recession, our average annual growth in the general fund operating budget was 6.2% per year. And in the last four years, we've actually driven that down to 0.6%, and that includes absorbing the library levy that by policy the council asked us to do. And so we've really driven down that expenditure curve quite a bit, and that has allowed us to continue to be where we are. And then lastly, or almost lastly, this is also that graph that we've seen before that says, we can't just ignore where we are. This represents our reserves or our savings account. And what this says is, is that if action is not taken to fill the gap, that quickly in the next couple of years, we cross that zero line, which represents running out of our savings account in the general fund. And of course, we can't do that, and so six years out, we could be close to $30 million in the hole, which of course, we wouldn't do. And so we have to take some sort of action. And what we're trying to do is continue to be above the line and at the same time, maintain that reserve target of 8%. And you've seen this, this is the revised recommendation. The initial recommendation has been changed based on your input, listening to the community. And we heard some concerns around progressive portions of the plan. We've heard concerns about the cost. We've heard concerns about the administration and collection of potential fees with E-Web. And so in that, what we said was is we revised it and we're continuing to look for footprint reductions, and we'll continue to find some of those as we move into the budget. We also talked about a stormwater and park services fee, which is really the first item tonight that we've brought back based on your direction previously. And also really to continue that conversation about a local option levy. And then we'll still, any gaps that remain in that necessarily have to be a part of the budget plan or the budget deliberations from the Budget Committee and eventually the council as you move into the spring. And so that just kind of starts to set the stage a little bit. And with that, I'll turn it over to Glenn to just outline briefly the ordinance before you.
So at your meeting last week, you asked us to bring back an ordinance similar to the one that we had presented, but a couple significant differences. Rather than actually adopting an ordinance that would result in the city manager being able to immediately establish the fee, what you asked is that the ordinance simply established the mechanism for the fee, that the council, rather than the manager, would be the entity that would actually set the fee. That that couldn't happen until after you went through the budget adoption process, including the public hearings before the Budget Committee, before the City Council. And then after you got through those and you considered all of the different options, at that point, you would have the ability to establish the fee and that it would have to have progressive components in it. If you have the ordinance in front of you, Section 4 is the part of the ordinance that actually added those various provisions. It's on page six of the ordinance. So in Section 4, Paragraph A provides that it's only the City Council and not the manager that can set the fee for FY14. Paragraph B provides that the council, if you choose to establish such a fee, that you cannot do it until after the Budget Committee and City Council hold the public hearings as part of the FY14 budget adoption process. Paragraph C provides that the maximum you can establish for the fee is $5 per month for residential customers. And then Paragraph D is the part that adds the progressive tiered rate structure component and provides that the fee that you would establish must include a low-income program social equity component, that the rate for residential and small commercial customers would not exceed five, could not exceed $5 per month, and that the rate for large commercial and industrial customers could not exceed $25 per month. We still would need to work with E-Web to make sure that this tiered structure would work with the way that they can actually bill it, but it would have those progressive components to it. That's what you asked us to bring back. I can certainly answer any questions that you have about the ordinance.
Any questions? George?
Yeah, I think there's still a little, I'm not sure about this, the billing, especially, say like apartment houses. You know, E-Web typically will, that's just one address, but there may be 10 or 15 or 20 or 30. I would assume each unit would have to be subject to the fee, or would it just be the one address?
No, the other parts of the ordinance provide that it would be each residential dwelling unit would have, would be subject to the fee, but the entity that would be responsible for paying that fee would be the stormwater sewer user. So if it's set up right now so that the apartment complex has one stormwater account and pays the stormwater fees for the entire apartment complex, then that same entity would be paying the fee for all of the dwelling units, but there would be the residential fee per dwelling unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Betty?
How much would Capstone pay?
I don't recall how many apartment complexes, how many apartment units they have there.
1,200.
Is it 1,200?
When it's built out.
Is it 1,200 bedrooms?
Beds, no, units, it's more like 480 or 450 units.
Okay, so if it were 400 units, because I can do this math, and the council chose to set the fee at $5 per unit, then it would be $2,000 per month that Capstone would pay. So it's whatever fee you set per dwelling unit times the number of dwelling units for that complex.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is a, I guess I did want to say one thing before we move on, kind of going back to your original thing, John, just for the audience, because we keep having these questions come up again. Some people say, well, first you say it's a $6 million gap, and then you say it's a $7 million gap. So one more time, would you explain the difference?
Yes, I will. The forecasted gap for the ongoing general fund budget is $6 million. So what, in order to balance the budget or the forecast period, there's $6 million of ongoing expenses or new revenue that has to be added or subtracted from the budget. So that's what that is. The other piece that has been talked about is that there are a number of one-time costs within the current budget that the council either appropriated as part of last year's budget, or for example, in the supplemental budget last year, particularly around some services for the homeless, actually added those as one-time monies into the budget. Those are set to expire or not continue into next year's budget. And so those, a portion of those also are talked about when we talk about the local option levy. But the ongoing gap is $6 million. That is to create the balanced budget through the forecast period.
So, sorry, Mike.
Sure.
Could you or Claire, I've got you in the queue, did either one of you have something you wanted to say about what the manager just said?
I just had a question, yeah. Was in that mix also adding back hours at the two branch libraries, or is that yet a separate portion of funds?
Okay, so that's not the $6 million.
Right.
So separating out the $6 million is the ongoing piece. Last year, part of what the Budget Committee recommended and the council eventually approved was reduce library, branch library hours. And so that is separate from the $6 million, and that, there is a piece of that is not currently funded in the budget. And so when we've talked about the local option levy, we've talked about those one-time expenses, fire station, fire company is one of those, and some human service is one of those. We've also talked about whether or not the council would want to restore those branch library services, so that's also a part of that conversation. But that's separate from the $6 million as well.
Before I finish and turn to Mike, I wanted to, second question I've heard several times is, how can you cut the amount of money you're asking people to pay in half and end up with the same amount? And I think you were pretty clear, we weren't going to end up with the same amount, but I want you to speak to that.
Right, that's correct. And so what our original proposal was, with a $10 fee on the stormwater and parks side, by cutting that in half, what we're also recognizing is, is that that doesn't fully cover that $6 million gap, or the package doesn't fill that $6 million gap. And so there will be a gap that, as the Budget Committee does their deliberations, and again, not presupposing whether or not you choose to, if you approve the mechanism type, whether you choose to set a fee or not in the stormwater and parks, that's still a council decision. But even if you were to do that, there's still a portion left of the gap. And so we would want to address that or need to address as a Budget Committee as we have before, and that would be a part of what the Budget Committee would have to work through.
Thank you for that. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, you mentioned in the course of that presentation, 8% reserve as a target and a good thing to keep. I think so too. I've had a number of constituents actually call me and write me recently on that issue and say something along the lines of, if you're saving money for a rainy day, have you been outside lately? It's raining, right? And my response was to try to explain to them the value of reserves with regard to bond rating and cash flow and, you know, that it's a one-time opportunity as opposed to ongoing revenue. But I was wondering if you might like to speak to some of those folks and that issue too, of why we keep a healthy reserve at a time when we're asking people to pay more?
Yeah, I think you've hit a couple of the real important ones. It does matter to our bond rating, and so that's an important component when agencies choose to raid us and then eventually if financial institutions want to participate in whatever investments we're investing in. So that is an important one. We've also used reserves throughout the four-year period to help get us through some financial potholes without having to actually dip further into reducing cuts. And a couple of those have been, I mentioned the library levy, but we've also had, for example, there have been PERS increases that we've had to absorb as well. And so we have used those reserves to help moderate that, and so we're not now having to, one year, just make dramatic cuts in order to cover a financial pothole, but we've been able to use the reserves to cover that and then build that in. I think the other piece is, if you were to take a look at the last five or so recessions, really going back to the 1970s, this is by far the longest recession by a significant amount. And so I think the strategy that you employed about not spending one-time money on ongoing expenses actually has paid off because when I, when you see this graph here, not only is it if you don't do anything, but if you actually consistently use your one-time money to fill your gap, that bottom line doesn't look any different. It's the same line. All you've done is sort of keep postponing the line. And the problem is, is then eventually you're going to run out of the money, particularly in this recession, where if you, if we had spent down our reserves, now we're down that line, and not only haven't we filled the gap, the gap's bigger, and we don't have any additional dollars to help mitigate it through. So it compounds the issue if you spend all your reserves down. But again, we have used reserves to help moderate this as we go, and so it's not as if we sock it away and never think about them. And so I don't know if that helps answer the question or not.
I think it probably does. Thanks.
Okay, George, you want, oh, go ahead.
Just one thing very briefly. There's one thing that I think we should be talking about as a, as a component of all this. I brought up the idea first about 14 months ago, when the subcommittee was meeting to try to stabilize, see if there was any way to stabilize human services. And I put out a work session, it was request, it was approved last April, and it's the idea of looking at the Riverfront Urban Renewal District with a view of, and this time, unlike Muptee, which I think needs a serious workover, personally, I think it needs to go away. And it would immediately shoot $330,000 a year into the general fund, and that's 5% of the gap. So I don't want, I mean, obviously, this isn't the place to go into detail, but I'd really like to see the work session scheduled as quickly as possible because I think it's very relevant to the upcoming budget discussions and relevant to all this stuff too, so just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
And what I would say is, you will have that scheduled here before your break, and so this would get at one of those questions. If the council chose to no longer have a River Urban Renewal District, the result of that could add some dollars back into the future of the fund, and it wouldn't for short close the gap, but it could add some, which then also could impact whether or not what you might set as a fee for the stormwater parks. And so all those kinds of things would get built into that till eventually when the Budget Committee and the council come back to approve a budget, there's several of those things that work into that equation to decide whether or not you choose to set a fee or not in the parks and stormwater. That could be one of those.
Yeah, well, what I had in mind was kind of a cost-benefit analysis to see if it's fulfilled its promise, if it has any chance of fulfilling its promise in the near term during this, you know, terrible economic situation we're in, so that was the purpose of it.
George?
Before I put the motion out, I do have a couple of questions. In looking through the proposed ordinance, I don't see anything that references a sunset date on it. So is this something that every year after the Budget Committee gets done, we have to go and look at this and adjust those rates? Or is this hopefully a one-time, or at a later time, can we just, the council move to change the ordinance, get rid of the fee altogether? Or how does, what's the mechanism on that? So people have an idea about that.
The council always has the ability to change the ordinance, so you're correct, there isn't a sunset in here. So if the council decided 12 months from now, 24 months from now, whenever you decided you wanted to have this, the park service fee component go away, you could adopt an ordinance to make that happen. What the council would be doing, if you decide in May or June to establish the fee, you would be establishing it for FY14, and then after that, the process that is otherwise in here for dealing with the stormwater and what will become the stormwater and park service fee, that process is an annual review. It's an administrative review, notice to the City Council, notice to the public, and then the city manager would be proposing a change, if any, to that fee. Council always has the ability to say, we want the fee to go down, we want the fee to go up, you want the fee to go away. But there is no automatic sunset built in.
Excuse me. The other question I have is to the city manager, I suppose. Have you and your staff gone through, gone back through the budget and looked at all the different programs to see which ones are just barely surviving that can be eliminated? And I'm not talking about the proposed list that you have passed, you know, given us in the past. I'm talking have, since you came up with that list, have you and your staff gone back through and say, well, here's a program that we're now functioning at 30% of what we used to two years ago or five years ago? To me, you know, there comes a point in time where you guys just draw the line and make the cut. So have we done that, or have we started that process? Or will we start that process before the Budget Committee gets into its full deliberations?
I'm thinking about how to answer that. That makes some sense. I think what our approach has been to date has been to continually balance all the services we have and the best way to meet the overall goals that the, that you have set for us. And so we've done that. And so now, I'm trying to think about, we haven't consciously had the conversation that has said, this particular service is on the brink of going away as it is, therefore, maybe we should eliminate it. What we've said is, is that we've gone through and cut about 20% of our expenses, and that we'll keep finding some efficiencies, but if we go any further, now we are talking about making some trade-offs about which services either significantly reduce beyond that or actually go away. So we're kind of at that, that breakpoint at that. We have been doing things differently. We have been creating different partnerships to try to maintain the services in the best way we can, given the current fiscal environment. But we haven't said, okay, this service is currently performing at 20%, and this is at 40%, and this is at 80%. So I don't know if that helps. You know, a good example is, you know, our fire department, and the chief would know these better than I, we operate with essentially the same number of personnel as we have, as they had back in the 80s, yet their call volume is significantly more. So does that mean the system is on the verge? Absolutely not in the sense that they continue to provide great service. Have they gone through and tried to figure out to be most efficient? Yes, they've done that really well, and so, but you're also now down to the point of it's a, you're kind of moving into what is much more of a core on any of these different kinds of services. So I don't know if that gets to it, or?
I understand. And then, you know, since our last meeting on this, I've heard from quite a few people, both through emails that we've all gotten and phone calls and people stop me in the store. And one of the other main questions that people have is, well, why don't you do something about the personnel costs, the wages, the benefits, the PERS? And I try to explain to folks that as counselors, we not really have that big of an impact or we can't really take that much action as far as personnel matters. And a lot of the limits that are, the benefit packages as a result of union negotiations, and I try to explain that that is between the city manager and the department managers and the unions. Can you kind of just take that and try to give a better explanation than I did?
I can, and there's probably some others here that can provide more specific data, but I can tell you in general, I think the employees have stepped up really well. If you could just take a look at past contracts, the fire union, for example, went three years without a COLA. without a cola as an example. And in during, during that time, actually, we've made a significant impact on overtime working with them and in close connection. So, I think that's a good story. I think if you take a look at our Ashmead employees, as we move forward, they also are not taking colas through this year and into next year. I think that's a good story. They've also will be contributing more to their health care, which is reasonable, but also maintaining what I think is a, a benefit package in which they're also able to continue a quality of life. And I think that's important as well. Our non-represented employees have not taken colas for several years. Our police union forewent, forewent a cola for a partial year. I think that's important to note as well. And so, and you can see some of that reflected in our costs. Our annual costs have been driven down close to zero. Our health care costs are, while they're increasing, are increasing at a significantly lower rate than the general health care cost. And that's because our employees are learning doubt and risk management. Her team have worked really hard at how to continue to drive that down. So, employees are working hard at that. So, with PERS, we don't have the luxury of just unilaterally changing PERS policy. That really is, for the most part, at the state level, that they really have to work through some of those. So, that's part of the environment we're in. So, we just have to kind of work with that and within that environment. Thank you.
Go ahead and put out, and then I've got two in the queue.
I'm going to go ahead and put the motion out. And it is, I moved to adopt Council Bill Number 5088, an ordinance creating a mechanism for a monthly stormwater and parks service fee and limiting council's establishment of a specific fee amount until the FY14 budget approval process.
Second.
Okay, Mike, and then Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. There's two points in both of the presentations that you and Glenn made and in answer to George's questions that I'm, I just want to make sure of I'm not certain I understand right. So, council will, in budget process, establish the FY14 rate at, but we're, we're kind of pre-agreeing that that will be a maximum of $5. Do I have that right?
Right.
In future years, then, will that $5 maximum remain in place based on this ordinance?
Uh, no, it could be adjusted.
And the rate will be set by you with the option for council to review or only on our request?
You could probably answer that.
The rate would be proposed by the city manager, and then he has the authority to set that rate unless the council says that you want to review and, but if, but it doesn't require future council action in order for the manager come FY15 to change the rate.
So, he can change the rate without notice to the council? Or does he have, does that go like on a consent calendar and...
He has to provide notice to the council as well as the public that he is proposing a change, what that change would be, give the public and the council an opportunity to comment. There's a set period of time. I can't remember if it's 15 or 30 days.
What qualifies as notice? Just an email or...
Uh, for, well, it, it's published. I think you get it in your packets. I think for the public, I believe there's something published, a notice in the paper. It's posted at the locations where we post notice, like right outside the city manager's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say that the manager told me that he would like us to get through with this whole thing tonight by 6:30-ish. I'm not sure how well we're going to do on that. We'll do our best, but I'm just letting you know because we have a whole nother part of this. And I've got Greg, Claire, Betty, and George Brown in the queue. Greg.
Yeah, John, I know that we've been looking at efficiencies in terms of combining and consolidating similar functions across jurisdictions. So, for example, the Human Rights Commission that the city staffs and funds and has a full program for, and that was one of the things that on the list potentially could be cut. What have, what have you had in terms of discussions in terms of restructuring some of those functions? And two, what have you had in terms of cross-jurisdictional conversations about those functions? For example, I don't believe that the city of Springfield has a human rights program and that the Lane County Human Rights Program has been severely cut back and is limited. So, are there some efficiencies we can be, we can gain, more efficiencies from those consolidations or restructuring? And the second question is, is this, how many positions in the city currently that are budgeted for and are currently not filled that you could possibly see as going away from the budget and not being filled? Or is the hundred that we lost over the last couple of years, the maximum that you feel is appropriate?
I think the second question first, that what we've done the last four years have really gone through and said which positions could be eliminated for whatever reason. Where we are right now, there are vacancies. We always have vacancies like every organization does, but then they're not vacancies in which we intend to keep vacant because we're at that point where we continually need to have the service. And so, some of those vacancies could be firefighters or police officers or, and I don't know specifically what, what they are. They could be our parks maintenance folks. And so, we're, so those will be filled. And so, when we continually look for footprint reductions, part of what we're doing is trying to find out if there's a particular position that no longer is needed. And I'll give you an example of one where, right now, you know Sarah Maderi is both working in the ACM, Assistant City Manager and Planning Development Director. Well, we're combining those two positions and essentially reducing our executive team by one member of the team. So, that's an example. Now, she'll continue to do two jobs, which is fortunately, she's okay doing that for now. But, so we continually look for those kinds of things if we can, but we've, and they'll, we'll always look for the onesies, twosies, but sort of the big bulk of them have been found over the last four years. Your first question around reorganizing around some of these other services, Human Rights Commission, for example. I think if the county in Springfield were interested in sort of partnering with us on a human rights, kind of a commission program, we would welcome that opportunity to have that conversation. The council last year actually changed the ordinance by, after a community conversation, excuse me, on how to really make that program more efficient among one part of it, but also more effective. And so, some of those changes, and I just don't remember them immediately, created some efficiencies within the program. But the commission is actually established by ordinance, correct? Human Rights Commission. And so, I don't have the authority just to change the structure of the commission itself. But the council did have a, a pretty good conversation last year and actually made some ordinance changes to the commission itself. We'd be happy to feed those back to you. But we're, we're interested in any partnerships across jurisdictions that would benefit all jurisdictions, both of the parties, both efficiently and effectively.
So, you could have those conversations.
Absolutely.
Administratively.
Absolutely. We can have the conversations. Some changes may require coming back to the council for them.
Okay. Claire.
So, thank you. And I, I really appreciate the questions and the clarification and the conversation about reserves and just kind of reminding folks how we got here because this is a challenging conversation. And folks have, have felt very challenged about being asked to pay this additional fee and/or to support the levy. But so, for me, it's important that we remind ourselves that we've had four years of cuts. And we did respond to this financial crisis by saying, all right, we've got to hunker down, we've got to find efficiencies. And I think the city manager has done a, a really excellent job working on that. And at the same time, we added police. We added services for downtown in response to community demand that we shepherd that downtown to, to where we're seeing it now. So, we're seeing the fruits of those labors too. So, I can support the motion. I do really appreciate the revised motion, the fact that it's a lower amount in terms of the highest end of the fee, that we are going to build mechanisms in there so that folks who are struggling are not going to be facing possibly having their utilities shut off if they can't pay the fee. So, I think we're really working hard to make this as progressive as possible within a difficult context. It's not perfect, but it's going to get us some things we, I think that this community really does value in terms of maintaining the current parks that we have and trying to keep that community livability piece protected. So, I just want to say that I will support this ordinance as presented to us.
Ready?
I'm not ready to support it at this time, and I don't see that we need to do it at this time. I don't know whether this is a time to discuss the levy or not.
We're going to do it soon as we get through this one.
Well, it's related. I, I wish that urgent things would go in that instead of here. I've never seen a fee go away. I have seen those memos we get in our packets, considering raising the fees. And you can protest all you want to, but it goes up. And most people don't even know about it. It's just a sheet of paper and there's something posted somewhere, and it goes up. But it, it doesn't go away. And I don't think that this is the time. What I thought was that we would have a levy to keep things that are urgent. And if it, if that vote goes down, then we have to think again. But we've never really discussed, we've never had a thorough discussion as a council of what ways we could raise money. I know staff has had, but we haven't had. Thank you.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I don't think I can support this. I, I fully appreciate and understand the need. It's there. There's no question. I, I appreciate and understand the manager's rationale for doing it this way and a, and a very good memo from Public Works Director Kirk Corey further amplifying all that. And I, and there's no question that we need more revenue. I just don't think, I think this will set kind of a bad precedent of transferring functions out of the general fund to stormwater fee, which isn't really related. I mean, it could lead to, you could, you could speculate in future years, we go, oh, well, okay, let's move the cahoots vans over there because, you know, they have to go sometimes get people out of parks because parks is already part of it. So, so you can add on any park function. You can use your imagination and just keep pulling things from the general fund and add on to this fee or any other fee that we, we might have. And I just, I think it sets us on a slippery slope and, and not to, just for the council to do this on their own and not consult the voters, I think, I think that's not a good idea. I think voters would support a levy as long as the need is clearly defined and they understand exactly what might go away without it. And as long as they see a list of all of the efficiencies, and they're aware of them. We've been presenting, manager and staff have been presenting all the efficiencies. They've found that they've done a great job. Well, eventually, you know, you kind of run out of places to look. So, I just feel like, I'd be willing to table it maybe or, or revive the discussion after the full Budget Committee has met and, and we get the opinions of, of the eight citizens' members. But I just, I fully understand the need and the intent of this, but I just don't think I can support it.
Chris?
We're really feeling our way along. Whenever you talk about money, you're always, you know, trying to feel your way along and be as responsible as you can. And a lot of the questions and comments I'm hearing are people who are wanting to make sure we act very thoughtfully when it comes to money. And that's why I'm, I appreciate that we're trying to move in small incremental steps. And what we're trying to do tonight is to say, the mechanism of using this is, is probably okay, knowing that we're going to have to work out a lot more details. And some of those details may be safeguard details because I'm hearing concern that if, if, if we give you a hammer, we don't want you to run around and start whacking everybody on the thumb. And we want to make sure that there's a, an opportunity for us to talk about how we use that tool in the most effective way. And I, I think those could be ongoing conversations about that, how the rate is set, what kinds of thing it's set for, how it integrates in with the Budget Committee discussions. Those things could still happen. You know, and I know, you can't constrain a future council. We can't say what a future council will do. But I tend to operate on the, on the hope at least that the quality of the councils that we have now are going to be the quality of the councils that hopefully we have in the future. And that you can put some of these safeguards in place, and it would really not be in the best interest of a council to make those kinds of wholesale changes. So, I do want to see as much written down as we can and, and work to get there. I think that trying to say that we'll create just a serial levy or, or create just another kind of a mechanism doesn't have the stability this has. And I don't think you can put all those eggs in that one basket and think that's going to solve the, the problem that we have. As you've pointed out so graphically, we've already made a lot of cuts. We've already eliminated a lot of things that could be made without the public seeing them visually. And I remember when we served on the school board, we had to make those same kinds of cuts, and we worked very hard to make them invisible to the public and succeeded to a great degree at our own peril. Now, we have to recognize that if we are forced to make these cuts, as Council Polling says, we may be looking at eliminating entire programs. I don't want to go there, not if there is a revenue option that we can look at. So, knowing there'll be more conversation, I'm willing to go with this mechanism. But I'm not entirely satisfied that the mechanism is in its final form or in the, in the absolute shape that we want to have it in. But I'm willing to keep moving forward with it.
Before I call on Mike, so I'm listening to you all, and the way it looks to me right now is that there may not be enough support for the, the mechanism to be put in, in place. And so, you're at a crossroads here because what you've got is a, the major and fundamental programs that we're trying to preserve are going to be saved by you making space for them to be saved by moving the park maintenance over into the stormwater. If you don't do that, then the major part of the programs that you want to preserve go what? Aren't taken care of. The levy, as it is currently being talked about, is for those additional one-time purchases that we've made. They're very important. They have to do with ambulance and fire and other things, but they aren't the, those, those major pieces that you're trying to preserve in our, in our ongoing budget. The part that you're trying to take care of with the stormwater discussion is the things that are in the budget. And the things that are in the levy are the things that you've been taking care of with year-to-year one-time payments. So, they don't work without each other. So, you, before you have a dilemma of where we're going tonight, and I just want to put that before you. Glenn, go ahead.
It, it sounds like at least some of the discussion that some of you want to have is the levy conversation before you actually decide what to do with this ordinance.
Right.
So, the easiest way to do that is for somebody to move to table this motion, vote on that. Once it's tabled, you can then choose to pick that up next week, next month, next year. But that would allow you to deal with the levy conversation first, and then depending on the outcome of the levy conversation, you could decide whether you want to pick this back up again.
So, do I have a motion to table?
So, I'm not in the queue anymore, Mayor?
I'm asking a question.
Okay. Thanks.
I move to table the discussion.
Second?
I'll second.
No discussion on that? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four in opposition. One, two, three, it passes, so it's tabled.
Can I ask a process question?
Mike gets to go first.
No, Mayor, because you've just cut off the conversation by tabling that without allowing me to speak. And you did it without, in a, in a really pretty heavy-handed way, I have to say. I thought that was really inappropriate, but thank you.
There.
So, just in terms of timing, I know part of the reason to have this discussion on the fee now was so it would be there if we decided to implement it after we had the budget process. Does the, how does the tabling implicate that timing?
It depends on when you decide to take it back up. You could choose to take it back up next week. You could take it back up next month. So, you... So you have time before the budget conversation starts to bring this back up and decide then. It may be depending on the outcome of your levy conversation that you decide you don't need to take it back up again.
Thank you.
So then we'll move on now to the levy discussion. Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. And, you know, obviously, you can take as much time as you want, even tonight, so I'll just finish out this conversation really pretty quickly, because you've seen it, and so rather than spending a lot of time on, you can get right to your discussion. Really, why a local option levy? We've talked about this. Essentially, it responds to concerns, maintains some of the community services that we talked a little bit about earlier in the previous item, helps close a portion of the budget gap. What this talks about is a cost impact to the taxpayers, as it's currently been talked about to this point. It's about $3.6 million average bill on a median home is $51 per year. We also would recommend some accountability and transparency, restrictions on spending of the funds that they're for specific items and that people know and recognize what those are. We would account for them in a separate fund. That way, we would also recommend an oversight committee to review the spending, and that allows that committee to really be able to have a lot of transparency in that. It would also expire in five years, but could be reviewed by voters like all other levies can. Next steps, tonight is a public hearing, and then depending on where you want to go. Right now, we have a schedule for the 11th of February and 13th of February. You can also add additional time if that's important for you, so.
Betty?
Thank you. I think a levy for now is the best way to go for the reasons that people get to vote on it. They can decide whether they want it or not, and it gives us more time to think of a better way to raise revenue. I don't think this is the end. And it could, could take care of the most urgent things, but the way you have currently set it out, I don't favor. I think one urgent thing is parks maintenance, especially keeping the restrooms open. And I think that should be a part of the levy. I think that's something that's really important to people. It's important for sanitation, for comfort, for, I see someone who doesn't like that, but the things that we really need that might go away, I think, should be a part of the levy, the things that people value. But I know this, things have been added. I thought of it as a place to close the gap or to keep from losing things rather than adding things. And the addition of more money for business loans, I do not favor. I think people in business take a risk when they, and they, that's what being in business is, is taking a risk and hoping you make a profit. And I don't think we should increase that. You also mentioned adding back the hours to the branch libraries. That's an addition rather than something to keep what we have now. I would like to see it just to be, to keep what we have now that's important. And I don't think I will ever be for a flat fee, but I definitely think that should be postponed for now. Thank you.
Chris?
I appreciate trying to come up with a list of what is and what is not in a serial levy, and I think we need to be very thoughtful about what a serial levy does, how a serial levy works, what are the kinds of things that generally are included. But for me, if I were to try to summarize and say, what is probably the single most important factor for me in putting a serial levy on the ballot, is whatever you put in that list, and I agree, we want to try to make that list as specific as we can. If I'm going to ask people to vote on something, I want them to vote on something that's pretty precise and pretty specific. And if you put those things on a list of a serial levy, and if for whatever reason that serial levy does not pass, then we must absolutely, positively, emphatically be prepared to cut those things from the budget because the serial levy didn't pass. The worst thing we could do would be to propose a serial levy with important things on it and say, pass the serial levy, and we will be able to fund these things. And then the serial levy fails, and we go, oh, well, we didn't really mean it. We'll figure out how to pay for those things anyway. Time and again, the public's displeasure with government and lack of credibility with government has been based on government saying they will do something and then not doing it. So we need to say, this is the serial levy we are proposing. These are the items that are on the serial levy that we're proposing, and go through however much time we need to, recognizing we've got to get something onto the ballot right away. But taking the time to say, this is the list. Vote for this if you support these things. Be prepared to lose them if you don't, because if we, if we don't pass a serial levy, and then we start methodically figuring out how to fund this stuff anyway, we'll jeopardize any future measures that we want to try to pass. Why would I vote for something when I know, all I have to do is vote no, and you'll figure out how to pay for it anyway? And that's what has created a credibility problem with governments in the area.
Mike?
I agree with Chris. I said the exact same thing in our last meeting. And the challenge that I have is this. If you can imagine that we could find other ways to pay for it other than the levy, then don't we owe the public the obligation to do that work, to find those things before we put a levy out? I, I brought up another idea for how to meet this particular funding gap, because I believe we should be doing the work, the hard work and very hard work, to try and find other ways to do this other than increasing people's taxes in this economic time. But I have to tell you, we will suffer a credibility problem, but I for one won't go along with saying, it's this or that, and if the public says no, then be willing to cut first responders. I'm sorry, but I won't. And I'll work very hard to find money to deal with that if it comes to that. But I wish this body as a whole would do that work first before we propose a levy, because that's the credibility problem.
Greg, and then George.
I have a question, John. Are we putting the cart before the horse a little bit without having this conversation with the budget committee, which we're scheduled to meet on Thursday? I think that we need to, you know, get that input from our citizen budget committee members. I also agree with Chris. I heard a legislator about 16, 17 years ago, a state legislator, make a very bad metaphor, but I'm going to repeat it here, that, you know, people sometimes need to see the blood on the floor before you actually realize what is happening and going on. And what has happened time and again is, we come to this cliff, and somehow, you know, while he coyote doesn't fall off, he gets pulled back, or he falls off and bounces back up. That's something that I think we have a serious credibility problem with the public. And it's not just the city, but it's all levels of government. So when we talk about, you know, well, we're going, this is going to go away, that's going to go away, and then, you know, we turn around and find one-time money or something else to extend it out, then, you know, our credibility is shot to you-know-where, and people do not believe that there is a crisis in front of them. So I just want to know why we are having this conversation before we have a deliberation with the budget committee, you know, about the next FY budget.
Would you like to respond to that? You know, it's been the general practice and policy of the council that in discussing policy-related issues to the budget or financial policies, that the, that this body makes those decisions, and then the budget committee themselves are actually responsible for helping to find out whether or not we're implementing our budget to meet the policy discussions of the council. And so we're just following what has been standard practice for the council in the past as we work through these kinds of things. With respect to the conversation around going to the fiscal cliff and then somehow being able to bounce back up, I think we have purposely, consciously, deliberately not chosen that path. The path we've chosen for the last four years is to, two things, not actually make cuts, come back to the council, cry wolf, and then not get funded and miraculously be able to fund things. We haven't done that for the four years. We've actually continued to find ways to be efficient, new partners in that, and then so when we're, and our hope is, is that so as we come back to the council, what we've tried to demonstrate is that we're not going down that path. And so when we really are at the place where we are, it's, we are where we are. And so we purposely tried to do that. So it's just been a different path. We haven't purposely tried to just eliminate classes of services if there's also another way to provide those. Our assumption has been, and what we've been operating on is that it's, that it's been the council's desire, and we've, through the budget process, to balance all the goals and objectives that you have. And so we have purposely tried to create budgets that balance those in the best way that we know how to do that. So it's just been a different, a little bit different approach.
I can support recommending something to go to the ballot and allow the voters to decide for themselves what they want to do. But for a point of, you know, reference and attribution, I believe it was Larry Campbell that gave me that quote, or that I stole from him, so.
George Brown, and then George Polling.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, you know, I, I think I will support the levy if we can come, you know, come up with a clear, well, and there's a deadline, too. It has to, the city attorney has to prepare the ballot title by, is it the 14th, or?
The council needs to take final action calling the election by February 13th, which is your Wednesday meeting. In order to do that, you would have to give final direction not later than next Monday, February 11th, so I knew what to put into the resolution calling the election. But your final action would be on the 13th. After you took final action, I would then draft the ballot title based on what was in that resolution.
Yes, and then, and then as you're doing that, that, does the rate and all of the criteria have to be nailed down in that, in that ballot title?
The rate or the amount, so there are two different
Amount.
Types of levies, and Sue can talk about that, whether it's a, you know, $3 million or $3.6 million per year levy, or a $0.50 per thousand of assessed value. But yes, you would have to identify what the rate is, what the term is, what the money's going to be used for.
Yes.
And then to the extent that you heard the city manager talk about some other things, that would be good to include in terms of accountability and transparency. We would want to include that in the resolution, too, so that the voters knew, yes, it really is part of it.
Yes, thank you. Well, I, you know, I don't know where the, I voted to table the discussion on the, at the stormwater fee. I don't really favor that. I would rather see us say, okay, there's a $6 million gap here, why don't we just make the levy for $6 million? Because if we did that, you know, the median homeowner for the $3.6 million would be $51 a year, and if you doubled that, well, actually less, that's $100 bucks a year. That's like $8.25 a month for the median homeowner. I think probably most people could handle that personally.
$8.25 a month?
Yeah. I mean, just roughly. Staff analyzes it, they'll come up with a different figure, but I would, that's just off the top of my head looking at it, so, and I think, I think that's much more understandable to people, and I think we can make a very good case that, personally, that we need to do this. So I would favor that and, over the $3.6, but I suppose I'd also like to hear a discussion from the budget committee about this, too. The more, the more voices of knowledgeable people that we hear, the better, I think, will help us frame our decision.
George Polling?
My biggest concern about putting, the city putting on a levy, whether it be for $3.6 or $6.9 million, is the competition out there. We're looking at the county, we're looking at the school districts, you know, it's going to be a crowded ballot with levy. And, you know, people reach into their pockets and wade through the lint and dust, and they've got a couple of pennies. Where do they want those couple of pennies to go? It's going to be a tough decision for a lot of people. In the past, you know, I've worked on budgets, and I've kind of divided it up into must-haves, nice-to-haves, and the final one is like-to-have. And I kind of agree with what Mike was saying, that, you know, we should be having the real hard discussion of, you know, funding the must-haves first. Problem with that is, you know, Mike and I, our must-have list is probably going to be pretty similar, but when you get eight people sitting around a table or 16 with the budget committee, you're going to have a bunch of different lists, you know. When, I kind of had a conversation with, with my wife. She's in the economic development field and had a conversation with her this weekend about the list that I asked John to put out on the web, our webpage, so people can see it. She said, well, I thought, you know, I personally thought it was a good idea, because the people in this community weren't aware of what some of these cuts were going to create. She said, I don't think it was that good of an idea, because if, if there's a company out there looking to expand, a local company looking to expand, or a company looking to move into our area, the first thing they do is they click on to the jurisdictions' webpages and see what's going on. And they're looking at this long list of services that we're proposing to possibly have to cut. It's going to hurt, that's going to hurt us, too, because without the economic development coming into the community, without increasing the tax base that way, you know, we're still looking at deficits. So, you know, the serial levy is a better way to go, because people can vote on it. If they don't want the services, they're saying, they're telling us, we're voting no, because we don't want these services. It's just that with all the other ones out there, it's going to be really tough. And, you know, I've had a lot of people in the last couple of days, and it's about a 50/50 mix on, you know, I'm willing to pay the extra money for the extra services as long as I know where my money's going. And the other half is, I'm not putting out another dime, so it's going to be a tough one.
Manager, how do you want to handle your need to talk to the budget committee? Because I've got four people in the queue, and we can just go on here. How do you want to handle it?
You know, I think it'd be better if we get some feedback from the council tonight, even if it's some generic conversation, and what we'll do is we'll just circle back with the budget committee and talk with them.
Okay. Betty, you're next up.
Thank you. I want to respond to some things that have been said, but I don't think the vote should be a threat. We are not saying this is the only way we could fund things. For example, if I get my way and we put keeping the park restrooms open on the ballot, I don't think we should close them the next day. We should find another way. But this, to me, is the best way, because people can vote whether they want, whether they want to pay it or not. I like George Brown's idea of maybe putting all our needs in the levy and just being open. It's more nearly progressive than a flat fee. There is nothing that's, we can do that's totally progressive, except an income tax, and we're not talking about that at the moment. But a lot of the comments I get from people are, why don't you stop giving money away? The tax exemptions, the River Urban Renewal District, the Enterprise Zone, and they think before you ask for more money, you should stop giving it away. And I think that's a good point. I guess that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Claire, and then George, and then Mike, and then I want to say something.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Chris, I'll put you in between me and you.
So I agree with many of the comments about this, you know, putting this out to the voters. They, they, we will, we're all voters here, too, will have some tough decisions to make in terms of the other levies that may be out there. We don't know for sure, do we, that the school districts will be proposing a levy?
We don't know that for sure, no.
But there's talk of that as a possibility. So I agree that this is a much more progressive, not completely progressive, but a more progressive way to try to fill this gap. I'm not sure if I support the idea of putting all our eggs in this basket and then seeing where the chips may fall, so I'd like to continue that conversation in terms of what amount we ask for with amount we ask for with this levy. And, you know, maybe consulting with the Budget Committee on that piece would be a good idea, but keep in mind Budget Committee members can come to public hearings and speak to us just like any other, uh, member of the public. Um, so meeting with them separately isn't necessarily the only way to get their feedback. Uh, one thing about the five-year levy, uh, to speak to some of what Councilor Clark has raised, you know, it does give us an opportunity to implement some of these other strategies, to look at how we might bring more folks into the tax base, how we can see some of the results of the investments we're making now come to fruition, and just as a, our total economy to climb out of the recession that we've been in. So it does give us some room to get back up on our feet, so to speak. Um, I disagree a little bit with, uh, Councilor Taylor singling out the Small Business Development Fund, which I think is the specific suggestion of the city manager in terms of economic development piece. That particular fund goes to provide low interest or no interest loans. It's not a giveaway of money, it's a loan to local folks, our neighbors, who are trying to create businesses that will stay here. So it's not giving a tax break to an out-of-state company that's coming in and taking the revenues away. It's actually seeding economic, economic activity here in our community that can then lead to, again, creating better economic activity and vibrancy for the whole community. So I, I do see the reason to have that in the mix. It won't, if we take it out of the mix, that won't keep me from supporting the levy, but I just wanted to make that pitch. Um, and in terms of the cuts, putting the cuts up on, the potential cuts up on the website, we're not the only community facing these struggles, so I'm sure many cities are in the same position. Um, and I think the list kind of helps folks quantify the various services and really see what's involved. So I understand your wife's, uh, comment, but I do think ultimately it was a good idea for us to put that out there so folks could see and we'd have some transparency around that. Thank you.
George?
Um, yeah, we're, we're going to be asked to choose one of these options, you know, like direct the manager to, to develop a resolution creating the levy and with the specific amount. And I kind of favor option two, develop the resolution for the local option levy, but not specify the amount just yet. And, but we need to do that soon, Monday or, I guess Monday. So, that'll give us a little more time to think about it, whether we want to try to go for the full amount or just go for half and figure out the other thing. And who knows, maybe the, maybe the stormwater idea will, will pass. I don't know, I, I wonder, but, but anyway, so I, I think rather than nail down an, an amount, I think we should maybe go with option two. And also I'd just make a comment about, you know, all the local businesses that are here are fully aware of the financial situation, and people may be thinking about moving here or, I think probably any town that they're looking at is in similar, if not worse, situations. So, you know, it's, it's tough. And if, and if this thing doesn't pass, what kind of a town will we have? Who would want to come here if we don't have all these services? You know, so, um, anyway, I recommend number two when we get around to that.
Mike?
I, uh, I appreciate the work that Mr. Manross did. I, uh, I won't be supporting the idea of putting a levy out for many of the reasons I've articulated in previous meetings. But the work he did, and, and as somebody who's in that field, I, I know he's very good at what he does. But any polling is done to snapshot a particular moment in time at a particular place. And in these times, I think the, the situation is more fluid and more dynamic than normal. And I think changes are, are, are happening more, more quickly and affected by more, uh, circumstances in the total environment. I think George hit on that when he talks about the other jurisdictions and what they may do on the ballot. I, I think based on the list that we're talking about, although those services are important, um, I, I think to imagine that putting a levy out and enlisting those things as the reasons why we think it should pass, um, I think we're, we're rather disconnected if we believe that that will pass the general public. Uh, I don't believe it will. I think with the competition that's out there, maybe one or two of the things on the ballot may pass, but I don't believe this would be one of them. I, I think we should be looking at doing a different kind of work to solve this problem. Uh, I think Betty had a point, and George had a point with regard to the issue of, of why people will vote no. And it's really important to me to say this very loudly and clearly because I absolutely reject the notion that if people vote no on what I think will be a levy that we put out, that it is somehow a rejection of the specific services listed. I absolutely fundamentally reject the notion of that as being true. I think some people, as Betty mentioned, have a, a real hard time with the idea that companies get multiple unit property tax exemptions. I think some people in other parts of town have a, a real hard time with the amount of money we give to, um, to, around homeless issues. I think there are a whole number of different priorities that people in our community will say, I'm hurting really badly. And until I'm not, while you're spending money on something, that much money on something I think is that low of a priority, I'm, I'm not giving you more. And I think that's the reason it will fail.
Part of what I can agree with, with regard to a serial levy is what I was mentioning before, if, if I asked someone if I could borrow 10 bucks, and they said, what do you need it for? And I said, well, I need it to go and buy dinner. They said, well, if I don't give you the 10 bucks, are you not, are you going to be out dinner, you're not going to be able to have dinner? Oh, no, I'll still buy dinner. I just want you to give me 10 bucks to buy dinner. Would you give somebody 10 bucks to buy dinner if they were already prepared to buy dinner anyway? I think the same is true with this serial levy. If we put something on the ballot and say, um, we think it's a great idea, vote for this, but if you don't, we're going to figure out a way to fund it anyway, where is the incentive for them to support it? Um, and so I think what I'm hearing is a lack of, of will to say, these are the things that are on the ballot, these are the things that need to be supported. I, I certainly wouldn't support a serial levy that didn't have the will behind it to, to make the cuts necessary to make, because I wouldn't expect the public to support that measure, not with everything else that's going to be on the ballot. And so if they're having to look at schools, and they're having to look at jails, and they're looking at what we're proposing, and they know, because we have told them in this meeting, that, um, if they don't vote for it, we'll go ahead and figure out how to fund it anyway, um, then what was the point? What was the point in doing that? Um, I think our word is our bond, and, and part of the inherent word that you do is you say, this is, this is what I will do. And I agree, we don't want to threaten, I never want to threaten, I don't think it is in any way a positive thing to threaten people. But I do think you have to be honest with people, and for me, it's not an issue of threatening, it's an issue of being honest. And I think if we say, we're creating a serial levy that will fund these things, then we have to be honest enough to say, and if you don't pass our serial levy, we'll cut these things, or don't have the serial levy, because it's not honest to say, the serial levy is to fund these things, but we'll fund them anyway. Um, any more than I would ask someone to loan me 10 bucks when I fully intended to pay for dinner anyway. I would feel like I was being scammed. And I think that, I think that's why I will support the serial levy if I think this council or this Budget Committee, uh, has the will to follow through on what it, what it needs to do. But I won't support a serial levy where I'm hearing the council give us, as a public, all the reasons why they should vote against it.
For me, a, um, very difficult discussion tonight. Um, because I, I feel like our, um, you, all of you and our staff have really, um, tried hard to figure out how to, um, take some serious, um, cuts out of our budget over the last four years. Everybody's worked really hard. And, uh, here we are at this place, and the way that I think staff has kind of tried to help us think about this is, take, take the most fundamental things that are, make for a good city, our fire, our police, our pools, our library, um, our park services, and let's, let's, um, really, um, have the courage to try to save those. And that we're trying, but we're going to try to do that through, uh, and, and a even more modest and tiered, um, stormwater fee. We move the cost of the parks that we aren't able to maintain to the level we want to already into the stormwater and make room in our general budget to pay for the other things that I just mentioned, and more that are sort of essential to the livability and life of our community. And those are worth going up the hill for. And then we have other things that are very important, but if the levy didn't pass, we wouldn't like giving them up, but we could probably live with it if we had to. The composite of those, the hope is that you'll do both, and you'll hold on to the basic things that make this a good community to live in, and you'll try to hold on to those other things that are like, and we talked about in the levy, that if you actually want to be sure that you have firefighters show up, and an ambulance in service, that you're going to try to stabilize those, to make sure that those happen. If you want, uh, to not pay more in terms of police and healthcare, then you're going to try to keep cahoots going. If, um, you want our families in these tough times to succeed and thrive, then trying to keep these branch libraries is an important thing. If we can't house every homeless person in our community, then at least we need to be sure we can bring them in out of the cold. And that's your funding of the Egan Warming Centers. Those are things that in the levy you could choose to do without if it didn't pass. We're not saying they're not important, we're saying they're important, but over here in the budget are the things that keep the basic livability of the community together. The package together is what we aim for. And right now, I honestly can't tell from listening to us what we're aiming for anymore. And I, I, so, because I think, I don't hear around the table you, uh, supporting the package. I hear some wanting to put everything into the levy. I hear others wanting to go for the levy, but not sure they want to go for the things that are the mainstay of the city. It's a very confusing, um, picture that, that's out, out here right now. There is, there, there is no, um, solid direction from this body right now. And, um, I'm a little bit at, I mean, you can certainly put the levy on the table, and then you can, and then some of us around the table will say, well, we think the levy should cover everything, and everything. And then I would say, and what if it fails then? What if it fails? Then you've, you've not only lost the things that are the one-time things, but you've lost the fundamental things. What about that? Uh, I frankly don't know, I mean, my, I had hoped that between all of us, we would be able to, to, um, move these things forward. We certainly halved them from what they started out being, tried to make them more progressive, did an all-out effort to try to make them the best we could be for our community and hold on to the livability of our community. And now I feel like we've just gone from being ready to do that, we're all over, we're all over the place. And it is going on seven o'clock. So I'm just going to, um, I think what I'm going to do is, I don't know if we'll put a motion on the table or not tonight, that's up, certainly up to you guys. I am going to go around the table one more time and just say, yes, did you want to say something, Glenn, before I say what I'm going to say?
No, but when you're done, before you started going around the table?
I just want to say to you, I'd like to hear from each of you, um, the direction you want to go now. And unless something changes, I don't, I think they are, uh, you know, maybe eight different directions, so.
Mayor, um, I just wanted to let you know, we weren't intending that you would actually put a motion on the table related to the levy until after the public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, so not at this meeting, but an hour or two hours from now.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Chris, do you want to start?
I would just say that the orig, the original proposal that we had, which was the cutback stormwater fee and the serial levy is, is a good starting point for me. It's not perfect, not where I want to be, but at least it's a, it's a starting point. So that, I'm kind of still in that ballpark.
Mike?
I believe that the best answer is for us to focus wholeheartedly on expanding our base rather than rates. We should be looking at bringing more taxpayers into the system rather than new kinds of taxes. We should be fundamentally looking at how we bridge enough time necessary to expand the base to a sustainable level. My suggestion previously was that we look at either part of the money at one time, capital monies that we could come up with for part of City Hall, as well as several others that I've mentioned, in order to bridge the next year, year and a half, and maybe even a levy. We need to bridge a short period of time, relatively speaking, in order to be able to effectively expand our tax base, so that we can fund a long-term, sustainable local government.
Claire?
Um, I'm still supporting the revised, um, stormwater and park services fee approach and the levy, though I'm open to discussing how much might be put on that levy.
Alan?
Yeah, sorry for being late. I, uh, had some work things that I needed to accomplish by the end of the evening, so that was my first priority for the day. I am still supportive of both the concepts of the, the stormwater and parks fee and the levy. I appreciate what you're saying, Mike, and I appreciate your 10-year plan of how to get us out of this hole, but it's not a 10-year plan. It's, even if it's a five-year plan, because these all come up for cuts in six months or less. And so we need to have that revenue this year, not over a long period of time. So there's no way for us to grow our way out of this, this plan. And as far as people concerned about the actual specifics, look, none of these things that we're going to do are going to be perfect. They're all going to have little foibles. If they were exactly the way I wanted them to be, they wouldn't look like this either. But we have to craft something that's sellable and doable, and that can, A, get a majority of the council, and B, get a majority of the electorate. And so I think what the city manager has put forward and as a revised proposal actually gets us there. And, and one more thing. We cannot, I won't support putting out something that doesn't, doesn't give people a choice. That says, we either, it's not a threat, it's not, it's just consequences, uh, and there's a choice of actions. We either fund these services or they go away. And I, I think that has to be that clear. It's, it's really simple. I think we're making it overly complicated. Either, it's, it's an either/or thing. We don't have the money to pay for all these things, we either have to get more money or they go away. To me, it's pretty simple.
Betty?
Maybe we have to get more money, but we don't necessarily have to get it this way. I think by putting the levy out, we're saying this is currently what we think is the best way. And I like George Brown's idea of, of putting the whole thing on the levy. I need to, I need to clarify something I, um, that Claire said. I didn't say we should get rid of the small business loan, I objected to adding more to it, which is what was put in the plan. The things that were added were more, more money for that and, and bringing back the hours for the branch library. I, I was objecting to adding instead of maintaining. Thanks.
Greg?
Uh, I, uh, you know, I agree, um, with Alan as far as serial levy is concerned. I think that, um, we need to be very clear in what services may be at jeopardy, what services that people want to fund, and it gives the voters an opportunity to either say thumbs up, thumbs down, and gives us a clear direction on how we proceed with the budget. Um, I'm not in favor of the, uh, the stormwater fee. Um, I think that, uh, funding parks in this way is not a very good idea. And as far as, um, what Mike said, I agree with you, Mike. I think that we should look to expanding the base, but, um, as Alan stated, that's not an overnight thing. And, you know, knowing, knowing, you know, the potential of annexing, uh, our neighbors in River Road and Santa Clara, uh, eventually probably will be a possibility. But I don't think that that's going to happen in the next six months, year, two years. And I think that that will not happen without a very heavy-duty discussion, um, and public debate over whether or not, uh, they become a part of the city. So, uh, I think that we need to look at other means, and I think that we need to... So, I think that we need to look at other means, and I think that we need to give the voters an opportunity to decide what they want to support.
George?
Well, I fully support the idea of a levy. I think if we explain to the voters in a calm, rational way that, you know, they have a choice, to, I think they'll appreciate that. One of the reasons I'm not real thrilled with the idea of raising the stormwater rates is because people didn't get to participate in that decision. And I feel that it actually would offend a lot of people, it would make them less disposed to vote for the levy. Even though they realize the need, I think a lot of people would just really be angry and vote against it just for that reason. I think we're going, we would lose a certain percentage of that positive side of the, of the polling that Mr. Manross's company did. I think we could lose a few ticks that way. That's just human nature, you know? People get angry when they're not, they don't get a chance to decide on something. So, I will, I fully support the levy. I mean, I've, I don't think I've ever spoke against that. And, you know, it's that way, when you put something on the ballot, there's always competing measures. It's always going to be that way, it always has been. There's usually more than just your request because all the other jurisdictions are usually in just about as shape, if not worse, than you are. So, the voters get to decide, as long as they know what the alternatives are and what they may lose if it doesn't pass, then it doesn't pass, and we start making these really awful cuts. So, but, you know, that would happen if we didn't try to put this on, that would happen anyway if we didn't try to ask the voters, "Would you tax yourself voluntarily to keep this quality of life that we have, or it'll probably decline?" And so, you get to participate in that decision. So, it's better to put it on and lose, I feel, than not to put it on and have to make the cuts anyway. So, people would get mad at us for that, too, without trying, trying a solution. So, and really, the, you know, I mean, it might be nice with all the people from Santa Clara and River Road want to annex into the city, but that can't possibly happen before next July 1st. And really, the thing you have to keep in mind there, whenever you expand your tax base, you're also expanding city services proportionally. So, you're going to have to, we're going to have to fix roads, we're going to have to put in sewer lines, we're going to have to put in all these other services that will probably eat up any, or a good portion of any new taxes that came in. So, that's, that's kind of the conundrum of growth, you know, grow, 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 it's great. Well, many times it's not, because then you have to expend for all these other services that you weren't, you know, paying out. So, that's not always the best idea.
George?
At this point, I'm leaning towards supporting putting the serial levy out. However, I'm, you know, looking at it as a bridge until perhaps some of Mike's ideas can be honestly addressed. But I'm not going to make my mind up until I hear from the public tonight. And to see what the serial levy has to, you know, if it, if it goes to that, that far, to see what the serial levy wording is. So, as far as, you know, saying, "Yeah, I support it," you know, I'm leaning that way, but I want to, I want to get some more. And as far as the stormwater park service fee, you know, I'm going to respect what I heard at the table and wait to hear from our fellow Budget Committee members and some more of the public.
All right.
Thanks.
We're done.